Call the order, the Madison District Public Schools. June, uh, May 21st meeting. We'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance by Ms. Scott.
Pledge of Allegiance.
By the United States of America.
America.
Republic.
For which stands.
Nation.
Nation.
Invisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Justice for all.
All right, can we get a roll call Sandy?
Uh, Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Ott?
Here.
Ms. Castle?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Pittman?
Here.
And Mr. Holcomb?
Here.
Next items, uh, public comments. Public input is fundamental to the operation of Madison Public Schools. Okay, now, to speak for the committee, period of time when it's public comments is set aside. Uh, Mr. Abdullah, do you have anyone that has comments?
He's muted.
You're muted.
Um, I don't see anyone with their hands.
Why does this keep muting you?
I don't have any, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, for some reason this keeps muting.
Okay, I don't have anyone with their hands up.
Okay, well, move right along then. Next item, superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball, um, I have, um, several items, so I'll just go through them and then if anyone needs any, um, clarity, I could speak to it more. About a week and a half, two weeks ago, we had Teacher Appreciation Week, uh, that was phenomenal. Our, uh, PTO and administration delivered, um, to our teaching, uh, teaching staff, Madison Staff Rocks, yard signs, um, that was all donated by the PTO, which was phenomenal. And we're appreciative, uh, of that, they delivered them to their teachers in some teacher of over an hour way. So we appreciate our PTO in doing that. Um, our trustees also sent out some, uh, videos to, um, on Instagram and Facebook, just expressing, uh, gratitude for our, not only our teaching staff, but everyone for all the hard work that they're doing. I know it's thankless, but we, we truly do appreciate everything that all the staff are doing. Our PTO also donated crafts for Mother's Day, uh, little crafts that kids could do, elementary kids that they could do with their families, that was, uh, phenomenal, we appreciate our PTO for that. Also, our first check of, um, hazard pay went out, that totaled approximately $11,000. Uh, that was for one month, uh, for all the staff, we tallied all their March, um, additional hours and part of April. And even though the amount was not a lot, what they're doing, uh, is, is phenomenal. I worked with them, I had the privilege of working with them today, deliver, and it's not an easy job, uh, what they're doing. And they're, uh, coming in contact with families, yet they do it day in and day out. We have one more going out next week, um, for a grand total of 8,000. So, um, that's for all the hazard pay for all the employees altogether for, um, the month of April, part of the month of April and partial May. We are also, um, we began the process of accepting custodial supplies. A few trustees, Ms. Ott and Ms. Thompson just brought that up, um, centralizing. And we had talked about that in our finance department, just to see how we could save every penny. How can we pinch every, every dollar? And, um, so we started that process, our hopes, uh, is that by the middle of the summer, where things are kind of calm, is the perfect opportunity to transition. We are utilizing the, we have a room that's on top of the garage inside Mamsey. If you guys have had a chance, um, it's already got changed, we're gonna use that as our central hub for custodial maintenance. And we, uh, hope, we hope, even though we saved some money already this year, our hopes is if we could get another 10% savings, that, that's, that's, that's big, so, um, we started that process. Also, um, a few trustees, Mr. Holcomb and Ms. Scott, uh, approached me and, uh, about the community garden. Those, those of you that know me know that I, I'm all about farming and, and gardening and I, and I love that. We are transforming, there's a few raised flower beds in the back of Wilkinson. Work, uh, with the, uh, actually, all the trustees have actually either volunteered time or donated money or pledged to donate money or do both. And, and we've had, Ms. Scott has had, uh, several people already volunteer, Mr. Holcomb is contacting Home Depot, trying to squeeze every, um, milk every, every donation possible. I've, I've committed money myself and I know trustees have committed money. Uh, it's for a great cause and we haven't started it yet, but we are looking, uh, we are starting the process of it already. We also, this is funny, Ms. Um, Ms. Castle was watching the news, um, a few weeks ago and she saw something on the news about, um, sign up to win a virtual graduation for your school. So she texted me and, um, we were feeling lucky, so we applied. And actually, we got awarded all three schools, um, Madison High School, Wilkinson Middle School and Madison Elementary. And, um, I, I, I was telling, uh, Barb, I said, you know what, I'm feeling lucky and sure enough, so we're working with Microsoft themselves and they're host, they're helping us with, um, uh, virtual graduation for our seniors. Now, that's just one piece of what we're doing for our seniors. So it never hurts, one thing I learned, it never hurts to ask, just like what we did, we asked and, uh, we got awarded. So thank you, Ms. Castle, for that. Um, I also been in talks with Oakland, um, the Oakland Press, I am purchasing an ad, approximately a thousand dollars that's going out either this Sunday or the next Sunday. Congratulating all our seniors, it's a full-page ad in the Oakland Press, uh, for our seniors, it's putting all their, um, names on there. And, um, it's approximately a thousand dollars, but if you think about the grand scheme of what our seniors have endured, it's, it's, uh, it's not enough really of what they deserve and what they're entitled to. And they've kind of been given the short end of the stick here, so, um, we're looking to do that either this Sunday, my hope is this Sunday, uh, or next Sunday. We are also, so I got a surprise for them this Sunday, but I'm not ready to share that information because, um, I, I know we're Facebook Live in it, but I, we do have a surprise for them this Sunday. And we're trying to be unique and I know everyone is doing the scoreboards, you know, with 2020 and, uh, we want to be different. So we have a surprise for them Sunday, so just look for our social media, um, as we drop hints. We also, Leslie has also been working with her team, um, to create a hybrid semi-graduation for each individual senior, she's working with her team on that. We're not ready to announce that yet until she has all the details, uh, but they're, they are working on that. And then the PTO has also a couple surprises for them. But we're headed to disclosures just yet because if they're watching, they'll know and, and the surprise will be, will be over there. Our PTO also donated candy bars with little messages for our seniors. And that's, that's amazing and we're grateful for them. We also started our summer cleaning and disinfecting, uh, with our custodians, uh, they are working days and we have a process where we check their temperatures before they come in. Uh, we have, um, scanning devices where we check their temperatures and if temperature is high, then we ask them a series of questions and that will allow us to let them come into work or ask them to go home and, and, you know, just to ask them some, some other questions regarding, um, the COVID virus. We sent out a survey to our families, we have about 150 results, um, so far, asking them for input on our continuing learning plan, what they like, what they don't like, um, number of devices in the house that they're using, how many of them are utilizing, our sharing devices, all of that is just to see what we need to tweak and adapt, uh, with our families. So we ask families to continue to fill those surveys out. Uh, we created and, on the process of creating a back-to-school task force, uh, involving community members, stakeholders, parents, administrators, teachers, ancillary staff, support staff. It's a picture and the questions, what the fall looks like should we come back to school? What does back-to-school look like? How, how can we address that? And, um, as we get more details, I'll share those details out, uh, with the school board. Today, we also started our Farmers to Families Program and, uh, we delivered 300 boxes of fresh fruit and vegetables along with meals. Cass has been phenomenal, I mean, if you see her, um, and what she's doing with her team, it's just, it's humbling. Every single car that I witnessed today, grateful, thank you, you know, be safe, they were all expressing gratitude to the employees and, um, it, it felt great, it felt great to serve and to give to families, you know, fresh produce is very hard, uh, to come by and we're gonna be doing that every Thursday until, uh, that program runs out for us. Okay. We are also asking all families and trustees, um, to lobby. We're gonna be posting on our, um, school website, all the different committees that we want families and trustees and employees to lobby, uh, we will have talking points. But we think that the lobbying has to extend beyond those few that already sharing the same point of view with us regarding state funding and, and budgets. There are a lot of people on the school funding committees, uh, that we really need to lobby and to push on. Uh, and we will have talking points for that and we are asking that everyone call and, and, and lobby them hardcore about, um, funding and school aid funding specifically for next year and the following year. I know I shared out a lot, but if you have any questions, I am done, Mr. President, with my report unless you all have any questions for me, I'm gonna mute.
I have a question.
Hold on. Why doesn't this work right? Okay, Beth?
Uh, Mr. Abdullah, um, this, what was the purpose in, um, centralizing custodial, custodial supplies? Does that mean all the supplies are gonna go to one building? Which would mean all custodians would have to take time out of their perspect, perspective school to run and get supplies if needed? Is that what that means?
Um, no, because.
You're muted.
Yeah, I just tried to unmute him, it's not working.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
And now, go.
So, so basically, the custodians place their orders just like they're placing their orders now, but instead of placing their orders with KSS or whoever the supplier are, is they send out an email letting us know what they need and then we will ju, we will deliver that, so they don't have to leave. Um, our hopes are, um, to save, Beth, if we could save 10%, that's $10,000.
Uh, uh, so that's why I'm asking, how are we saving if we have to, like, are we purchasing supplies and putting them in one place instead of, I mean, like, how are we saving? Because if we.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry.
If, okay, let's say a custodian has run out of something in their building. What, what do they do? Do they have to leave their building and go and get it or does some, they have to wait for somebody to come and bring it? Like, are, like, I don't, I'm not understanding.
Let me, let me give you an example, when, when I became a principal in 2015, I found 40 cases of tissue going back to 2008. Not because anyone was negligent, but what happens sometimes is that people get stuck in the rut of just ordering without really assessing their situation. By centralizing it, it allows us to see what we have and only order what is needed. Uh, here's another example, when I went upstairs, I found, um, floor stripper from 2002. Each bottle is about $90, I found eight cases. This is not anyone's fault, but if we centralize it, then those little things could add up to a big savings.
Okay, so are we gonna keep an eye on this and to make sure that custodians are not running out of supplies in their prospective buildings where they're having to wait or they're, they don't have, they're just sitting around waiting for supplies? Like, we're not gonna be cutting them short of supplies that they need? And my second question is, did we talk to the custodians about this, are they aware?
Yeah, so I, I met with, uh, I met with the head custodians. I already talked to them, we have, uh, weekly meetings, just because we're talking about back-to-school, what it looks like. They've been awesome, um, brainstorming. Um, I've also asked the principals to include them in their own prospective task force because they have a different insight. They know what will work in their buildings. And it's different for them, but different doesn't necessarily mean bad, it just means different. And, and, um, we have a great team and I think they'll adjust just fine. I could give you an update as it happens and we could proceed from there.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that custodians were not sitting with, were, were at work without supplies, that's what I was concerned about.
Now, we will have toilet paper for sure and we will have paper towel, Beth, no worries.
Well, and sanitizer.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, um, switching to Mr. Pittman.
I unmuted myself, can you guys hear me?
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Abdullah, I heard you mention a few times about, uh, back to school next year. So I know that, like, the governor has putting together this, uh, advisory board and, you know, there's a lot of talk. What, how involved have, have, have the superintendents been? I mean, when, when school starts next year, does this sound like it's going to be something that each, each district is going to be able to determine what they do? Or is it going to be something where the governor is gonna say, this is what you are going to do? Or are we not to that point yet?
Um, just this morning, we had a meeting with the state superintendent, Michael Rice. We, uh, um, all Region 9 and 10, we are considered Region 9s and 10s. Uh, we met with Dr. Rice, um, and he debriefed us on coming back to school in the fall and provides us some insight. He also talked about the advisory committees, uh, for example, we also have an advisory committee, a suburban advisory committee and then, uh, and a rural advisory committee. And they kind of all work hand in hand. If we all come back in the fall, we all come back in the fall. You know, if we all go full online, we're all doing full online, you won't, and, and.
When, when you say all, do you mean all of our kids or all Region 9?
Yeah, I think Region 9, like us, Ferndale, Berkeley, Lanfear, Hazel Park, we're, we're in this, in this group and we typically coordinate with each other. And, and we, we talk, we, we meet twice a week. Uh, and when we're not meeting, we're group texting and we're not group texting, we're emailing ideas back and forth and we have a lot of committees that we discuss, uh, along with Oakland schools.
Okay, you know, and, and we may be, you know, more unique in some areas than other districts because I think we have a pretty big, uh, student population that rides a bus from, you know, say Pontiac. And if there are restrictions as to like how many kids you can put on a bus, because they have to be spaced apart, I don't know, I, I just really, you know, it's, it's just something I think us as a district is going to have to really, really plan on, I mean, I don't know, you know, probably making multiple trips is not going to, you know, kids will get, be late. I mean, that's if they're all reporting to, to the buildings and, you know, I just think that, that, that logistically could end up being a, a big issue for our district.
All right, thank you, Bill.
All right.
And we pull up Gloria. All right, Gloria?
Mine are muted. Are we doing treasures report now?
Uh, no, I thought maybe you had something to add on that. Whatever.
Most of what I want to say has been covered about centralizing custodial supply stuff.
All right, then why don't we go on their hands, uh, move it to the. Go ahead, Gloria.
All right, I'm calling it housekeeping notes. It really is not a financial report, it's more of a, I called the meeting on May 8th to discuss this centralizing. This is something that we've been bouncing around with Angel for a few months now. And Mrs. Ott originally came from another school district that utilized this program. We used to utilize this program in this district. It just makes sense that you don't have 25 cases of toilet paper sitting in one school and another school is ordering it. Keep it in one spot, they send a rack over for what they need, it's put on the truck and it's there the same day. It's just so much easier to keep track of supplies and you're not buying supplies you don't need. The other thing I wanted to talk about again, Angel brought this up, was the lobbying. As treasurer, I'm usually alerted to cuts that may or may not take place by the state. The State Board of Education sends me these financial statements, whatever, about what may or may not happen as far as financing. I just want everybody to understand that it's so important to lobby, not just on our side of the aisle, but on both sides of the aisle. Anybody you can think of up there at the Capitol, give them a call. Reach out to anybody and everybody you can because it's so important. Okay, and that, that's all I got.
Well, I'd like to add to that, that it may be better to lobby our congressmen and senators in Washington because the cuts are gonna depend on if they approve money from the state or not, so.
And that should be true, yeah.
I think it's better time served lobbying Congress. Ultimately, they're gonna pass another stimulus package that includes money from the states and that's where we're gonna be made whole, not at the state level.
Yeah, I know, I called, I spent two days calling up at Lansing, just leaving message after message after message. Can't hurt.
Okay, then if you're done, let's move on to the action items, Board of Education action items. First one, it's recommended, the Board of Education approved the meeting minutes in the regular school board meeting on April 28th, 2020. I'll make that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Holcomb? Discussion? Concerning the minutes? No? All right, can we get a roll call vote Sandy?
Uh, Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Ott?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
All right, next item, it's recommend the Board of Educa, Board of Education approved the request to purchase Chromebooks. Uh, my understanding from reading the motion is that there were bids and one was selected. I'll make the motion for this item, do I have a second? Just raise your hand. On the.
I think we're all unmuted.
Okay, Ms. Ott is second?
I'll second.
All right, uh, discussion. I, I'd like to start out the discussion then. Uh, Mr. Abdullah, we had multiple bids for this, is that correct?
Actually, I'll answer that, this is at one of. Actually, we went out on the Oakland Schools website where they already have pre-bidded items.
Okay.
Pre-bid is technology, so, um, you know, we looked at a couple of vendors, Dell, C-High and, um, HP and C-High, they came in at the, you know, the lowest bid amount for what, for what the high school needed. And that's, that's why they went about choosing this particular company.
All right, so that was to Oakland School, okay. All right, that answered my question, anyone else? Mr. Abdullah?
I have a quick question.
Yeah, Mr.
My thing is that we're also getting warranties with this, correct?
Yeah, so, so. Uh, RMC bid, um, it's a state bidding, so they use the full power of the state to get the lowest bids possible. So you can't really compete with that and they're pre-bids, um, that's where we got the smart boards, if you recall, um, last year. And we went with the three-year extended warranty because no hassle, no headache, anything happens, we don't have to worry about it. And we, we're doing all of this in preparation for, um, ensuring that we have full 101 devices. Right now, some families are not electing to get a device, but we can't plan for that, we have to plan for having full devices and the high school has not had a lot of technology, uh, over the years.
All right, anybody else? All right, can we get a roll call vote?
Mr. Kimball, I did raise my hand there, just real quick, could, could we go, could you, uh, Mr. Abdullah, could you please just explain real quick for everyone who may not know what Title I funding is? So, I mean, I don't think, go ahead, I'm.
Okay, so I'll speak a little bit and then Edwin, if you wanna jump in. Title I money is for at-risk students, we have to write that in advance, um, ahead of time and you could only use it for that unless the state allows you to tweak it. So, um, and it's really, it's really driven for buildings for that same reason, so the districts can't tell the principals what they need in their own buildings. I sat through a Title I audit and they specifically allow buildings to control some Title I money because there, there's been instances where districts controlled all Title I money and schools didn't get a lot of it. So, um, this is specifically for them, this is what they're asking, um, and we are just supporting it. It's for at-risk students, they have to meet a lot of criteria, does that answer your question, Mr. Pittman?
Yeah, and I, I, I'm familiar with it, but it's, basically, it does not come from our general fund.
No.
No.
So this, just so everyone knows that it's, yeah, all right.
All right. Phil, did you wanna add something?
Yes, uh, Title I funding, you know, thank you, Angel, that was a wonderful overview. It's grant funding and like Angel said before, uh, all of our buildings to elementary school, high school and middle school were awarded so much and the application is done in advance. The Michigan Department of Ed approves the application for the items that want, that we wanna purchase and then, you know, we still follow all the policies and procedures the district has and the state has and in terms of procuring these funds. For example, you know, for this particular purchase, it's in our Title I application, this is what the high school needed. It does include warrants. Um, it does include warranties. Because the total was $30,634, of course, we had to make sure that, you know, everything was pre-bidded. And Oakland Schools has a wonderful, you know, website set up for pre-bidded items. Like Angel men- mentioned Remsy and, um, we're, we're able to go on there, see what companies have already pre-bidded, you know, on Chromebook, Chromebooks, which is what we, we need. And, you know, here we are. So, yeah.
All right, thank, thank you, Ms. Phil. Uh, Ms. Scott?
Um, Angel, so are, are we, are the Chrome, uh, tablets going to the at-risk students?
You know. We are.
But the whole high school, uh.
The, we're a 100% Title I.
Yeah. The whole high school qualifies under that distinction. It's, it's called building-wide. So however the high schools want to disseminate those Chromebooks for student support, that whole student population qualifies.
Okay. All right, Ms., uh, Mrs. Thompson?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that I went on to the educational technology site, which kind of oversee Title I funds and stuff. And since 2017, they've been encouraging more and more technology learning. There are also all different programs you can sign up for. But this is wonderful. They use it in a whole classroom with that many. And it's really a good idea.
Yeah, it is.
All right, thank you. Uh, that's the end of discussion. Let's.
I have one more, if I could. I don't know if this would be appropriate to bring it up at this time. Yes. But since we're talking about at-risk students and Title I. Uh, Mr. Abdullah had, um, speaking on behalf of the special needs students. Um, it's not always easy for special needs students to access their tablets. And it's not been easy to get written assignments, like, you know, because we're, we're not in the school. So is there any, is there any way we can look at that for the special needs students? Um, especially for next year, uh, going into it, if it's going to be an online, um, an online or virtual, to look into printers for the families for the children with special needs? Because it's not always easy to access their, or have them work on their tablets or iPads.
Yeah, we could look at, um, any modified technology that's available. We could also look at pre-loading some stuff and testing it for, um, special needs students. And we could look at print, printers are not expensive. Typically, the cost is in the ink. Um, and I think that's how vendors get us, but printers are not expensive and we, we could just get some pricing on that.
Well, I think, uh, I, I was once talking to, uh, Mr. Kimball about it and he said black and white printers are, laser printers are cheaper.
Yes.
So, I'm just saying, I just want to bring that. It's not been easy for special needs children to always access homework.
Okay, though I don't disagree with that. That's kind of off topic because right now the motion is to approve these tablets, but that's something definitely bring up in the future.
Okay.
All right, so anyone else? Gloria, do you get your hand up again, or is that the old one?
No, I thought I put it down.
That's all right, I'll put it down for you.
I got it.
In no way, shape, or form was that threatening. All right, roll call vote, please, on the motion at hand.
Uh, Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Ms. Ott?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, moving on, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the designation of a representative to serve on the 2020 Electoral Body responsible for election members to the Oakland Schools Intermediate School District Board of Education. Um, I'll make this motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mrs. Thompson, discussion. Uh, first question I've got is do we have to designate somebody? For some reason, you're moot, muted, Mr. Abdullah.
Yeah, Mr. Kimball, you have to actually name, there's only one person running. His name is George. Um, so you actually have to vote on selecting George. Um, and then designate one of the trustees. Um, once virtual voting is allowed, you have to designate one of you to vote on the behalf of Madison District Public Schools.
Okay, do we, do we have to name a trustee today?
Yes.
Okay, who wants to do it? Put your hand up.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Ott.
Uh, from Mr. Abdullah had, um, it says on the paper, no absentee ballots. Have they changed that to virtual voting?
I spoke to, uh, Wanda Cook Robinson just this afternoon. I, um, right now, it says no absentee, but they are amending their own bylaws to allow for virtual voting.
Okay.
And they'll be in touch with, with me and whoever the board designates and, uh, allow us to do a mail-in or virtual voting.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, back to who would like this honor? Anybody?
Are, are we nominating people?
Well, so as I, Mr. Abdullah had said, I have to point someone, is that correct?
Yes, you just have to, you all have to, you have to designate somebody.
All right, once again, uh, raise of hands on the board here. Who, who wants this designation?
I'll do it.
If, if it can be done virtually, instead of having to go to Oakland County on June 1st, I'm with Barb.
Who is the first person? Because what I want you to do is raise your hand on the board here, it's like, please.
I think the first person was Barbara Castle and then Debbie Ott.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I could either do it virtually or in person as required.
Okay, see, I can't see Barb at all. Where is Barb? There's Barb. All right, uh, then between the two of you, you guys want to flip a coin or you just want me to appoint somebody?
No, if, if, if Barb wants to do it, she has my vote.
Okay, and it's Barb it is, I'm going to reread the motion. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the designation of Barbara Castle as a representative to serve on the 2020 Electoral Body responsible for election numbers in Oakland County Intermediate School Board of Education. Sandy, you can make that small change on the motion. I'll make that motion. Someone second it?
I, I assume that we're still going to go, I'm sorry, because you, you did already, you.
I, I, I did, but since we have to designate somebody, I've made the change to designate Barbara Castle. And it's a new motion.
Okay.
With that, with that small change, Barbara Castle.
Mr. Kimball, if I may?
Yeah.
We also have to name an alternate, so will, you want to put that in the motion also, that it's Deborah?
All right.
One there says, uh, as an alternate.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the designation of Barbara Castle and alternate of, uh, Mrs. Ott as a representative to serve on the 2020 Electoral Body.
There you go.
Responsible for election members to the Oakland School Intermediate School District Board of Education.
There you go.
So if you want to, just Sandy, insert those two names, Barbara Castle as a designated and Mrs. Ott as a, uh.
I had my hand, because I was concerned about, uh, elections in November. Um, I don't know if Barb plans on running, so we did need a, a second one.
That doesn't matter, doesn't matter. Her term goes through January 1st regardless.
But it, that, but this, right, but, um, after January, as long as we have, uh, Deb is the second, that's all right.
We can, we can designate, we can designate someone new at that point.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I don't know what, what that, I mean, that vote, this vote is going to happen in June.
Yeah, right.
It's not like they're running for the seat, Beth.
Right, right.
They're, they're just the one to put the vote in, yeah.
It's kind, it's kind of like.
For George.
Right.
George, and we might want to get a little more specific and get George's last name at some point. So we're not voting for anybody named George, but anyways, all right.
I'm getting, I'm getting the name right now because I believe you have to actually vote, vote on them as a whole body.
Right, well, that, well, that can come when they vote out.
George Ehlert, E-H-L-E-R-T, Mr. George Ehlert.
Do I, do I have a second to this motion?
I second it.
All right, Mr. Holcomb, thank you. Any more discussion? Nope, okay, roll call vote, please.
Uh, Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ott?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, moving on to the next item, the check registry. It's recommended the Board of Education, excuse me?
Um, you actually, in the, in the resolution, you, on number two, it says the board, you actually have to name. If you look at number two.
We, we did.
The board.
We did, we added to the resolution the name.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't ca- okay, I didn't catch that.
Barbara Castle, alternate, Mrs. Ott.
No, George Ehlert, candidate.
It's number three.
Number two, the board supports candidate George Ehlert for one position of Oakland Schools. You have to make that right, yeah.
So we got to do the motion all over again? Is that what you're implying?
I'm just saying, if we want to do it, we have to do it.
I'm just asking, do we have to do the motion over? All right.
Yeah.
All right, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve, following designate, Barbara Castle, alternate, Mrs. Ott to serve on the 2020 Electoral Body responsible for election members to Oakland Intermediate School District Board of Education, George, what's the last name?
Ehlert.
Ehlert, only candidate running. All right, do I have a second to that one?
I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Holcomb? Since we've already discussed this, anybody else, or we just move to a roll call vote? All right, roll call vote.
Uh, Mr. Kimball?
Again, yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Ott?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, we wish George all the luck on the. Next item, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the monthly expenditures total of $1,694,633.09. I'll make the motion. Someone second it?
I'll second.
All right, Mrs. Thompson, thank you, discussion. No? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Uh, Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Ms. Ott?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
And Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, next item, officer and committee reports. I don't think we have any committee reports. Board members open table discussion. I know Beth's already discussed the printer idea, which is something good for the future. The board has discussed the garden. If anyone has anything else, we'll go right into board comments. If you have something else, raise your hand. All right, board comments, let's start with Mr. Holcomb.
Uh, no comment. Thank you, guys. Uh, Angel, you're doing a fantastic job with everything. Um, and your, uh, your staff. Uh, just fantastic. Keep up the good work.
You don't want to discuss how great the garden is going to be?
How great what is?
How great the garden's going to be?
Oh, that's going to be good too, but me and Beth will have to talk about that one later though.
All right, uh, Ms. Ott.
Uh, I just want to say, what's that?
I don't know why I always say Ms. Ott, it's missing.
Okay, I mean, what else can I say, you know, since this pandemic has started, other than, um, our staff is fantastic. Um, the volunteers helping out with the food distribution is awesome. Uh, kudos to, uh, Mr. Andra for, uh, his work on that. Um, and a special thanks to all the veterans this weekend, uh, for their service on this Memorial Day weekend. And, uh, I did hear that Mr. Holcomb got his hands a little dirty in that garden. Uh, thanks for that, Mark, and, um, it is just my hope that everybody stays safe and, uh, can enjoy their families this weekend. That's it.
All right, uh, Ms. Castle.
What can I say except thank you, Angel, and your staff and all our teachers for working so hard to make our students are getting what they need. So thank you, everyone working to make our seniors, um, graduation year memorable. Thank you for everything.
All right, uh, Mrs. Thompson.
Safe out there.
Again, I'd like to reiterate, thank you to all the veterans for your service for this weekend. And all of the staff who have put out these wonderful lunches and veggies and fruit and everything else that's going on. And that's about it. It, staff support you, Angel, everybody. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Scott?
Um, I want to congratulate the class of 2020. Um, we're also proud of each of you. You were born during 9/11 and you are surviving COVID-19. You are all destined for greatness. Thank you to Angel, the teachers, the principals, Kat, phenomenal, and her staff uh, feeding our children in our community. It's outstanding. And they're so appreciative of it. Um, I want to thank Amanda Stein and her volunteers at the Madison Heights Food Pantry for their hard work in feeding our community also. And for Angel for, uh, supplying them with food as well. Um, those people are working hard every single day and the people that are giving donations to that. Uh, thanks to our PTO, you guys rock. You're the best, best, we have the best PTO ever. Um, I want to thank the board members that did, uh, or will be, uh, giving the donation towards our, uh, community garden. And, uh, Mark, it will be, uh, great having you as a partner in our, uh, community garden this year. Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Pittman?
Okay, uh, I want to start by giving my personal appreciation to the staff, all the staff that has been working so hard uh, with, with the food and even, you know, our outside maintenance guys, our, all of our custodians, our teachers. You know, really, really, I personally appreciate, appreciate all of your hard work. And I'm sure our families, our community appreciates it also. And not to try to, I just want to clarify that this is Memorial Weekend. It's not a, it's not for the veterans, it's for the soldiers who gave their lives defending and didn't make it back. Uh, we have Veterans Day for veterans, not to slight them in any way, but it is for those who gave their lives and I hope we can all appreciate that and, uh, you know, be thankful for those that did give their lives. And I just want to also state that, I know I brought up a few times about the starting of next school year. Uh, and, uh, I'm just, I just really have a lot of, a lot of concern about how that's going to go, you know, whether it's, you know, there's many, a few different scenarios, couple days in, couple days out, 50% of the students in. What, whatever it is, I just hope that, uh, us as a district stays in commu- good communication with the parents of all of the students because, uh, you know, this is, this is, you know, like, like they're very, uh, you know, concerned about what's going to happen with their kids come August or September or whenever the school year starts, so I just would like to ask that we stay in, in pretty close communication with the parents so that they can, uh, you know, hopefully we can ease their, um, their minds and even just, uh, you know, let them know what we are thinking. And, uh, that's it. Thank you all.
All right, I believe that leaves me last, uh, uh, once again, to all the servicemen and people that sacrificed their lives for this country. Uh, I would like to, to salute them and all the stuff going on right now. Unfortunately, I agree with Mr. Pittman, but it's a little too early to know what's going to go where at this point. And right up to the end, there, there could be a vaccine, there could be a lot of things, so it's all kind of up in the air at this point, unfortunately. It's not the best position to be in. But, uh, we'll do the best we can with it when the time comes. And other than that, uh, congratulations to all the seniors. And I mean, the seniors graduating, not the seniors at the senior complex. And, uh, that's, that's it for me. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Mrs. Ott, thank you, Mrs. Mrs. Ott, thank you, Ms. Scott. Discussion. No discussion? Can we get a roll call vote?
Uh, Mr. Holcomb?
Give me the mark.
I don't know who keeps muting me.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Ms. Ott?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Meeting adjourned.
Good night, all.
All right, good night, everybody.